Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council meeting scheduled for February 14, 2022. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. At this time, we will call our meeting to order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll accept any motions to approve this week's agenda that you have before you. You council members were presented with that early this week, Tuesday. At this time, we'll entertain any motions.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add one item and move one item. I'd like to move item 4L utility late fee policy to the regular agenda and add one item for personnel actions, customers, or technician.
So with that said, I will entertain any motions. That is the motion. Do we have a number for that?
I believe 6C will be the utility bill. So that, yeah, that'll be... Hold on.
4L will be moved to the regular agenda.
So it'll be moving to 6. 4L will move to 6C, and then there will be a new agenda item for personnel actions at 6D. Yeah.
So do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Sullivan, thank you very much. Any other discussion, concerns, questions? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of this meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. At this time, we will take a little summary of these consent agenda items from our city administrator, please.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. We have a few items here tonight on consent agenda. I'll go through them briefly. We have the city council minutes from January 24th, our last meeting. We have dispersment approvals through February 14th, 2022. In that are some of the additional consent items that you'll see in here, some of the payments that we've made or that we're proposing to make. Item C, we have the integrated pest management and Emerald Ash Borer management plans. The integrated pest management looks at how we handle invasive species, noxious weeds, things like that, kind of what we do, how we do it. And the Emerald Ash Borer management plan, that really looks at our ash trees that we have in La Sure. Emerald Ash Borer isn't here in La Sure yet, but it's starting to make its way down 169, and it will be here at some day. So those plans kind of outline some pathways to address those issues, and they also allow us to apply for grants related to both of those items. So those two are in here, integrated pest management that went to the RPAC at their last meeting, Emerald Ash Borer because of some time constraints with some grants that did not, so it's in front of council tonight. There's the Minnesota DNR grant application resolution. What that does is gives us authorization to apply for grants on behalf of the city of La Sure for recreation grants that the DNR does proposals for each year. This grant will likely be related to the pathways and things like that at Legion Park. So some of that infrastructure to get the Legion Park master plan going. Item E is the North Taxi Lanes Construction Project Professional Services. So that's to design the project for the North Taxi Lanes project out at the airport. Item F is the High Zone Redundant Water Main and Booster Station PFA Funding Application. So that's the redundant water main that goes up Forest Prairie Road and the booster station, and we're applying to get that funded through the Public Facilities Authority, similar to what we did with well number eight. Item G is the approved the pay application number five for Magnee Construction. That's related to the well number eight project that's currently ongoing. Item H is the CASA 36 Electric Materials Bid Approvals. What that is, is for the CASA 36 project, South Main, we're going at it where we're gonna, where we got a bid for the materials for the project, and then we're gonna get a bid in the future for installation services of that. And this is just for the materials piece of it. The item I is the annual cogeneration report. That's something we have to do annually related to behind the meter generation, so solar panels that we have on our electric grid. And we have to file this report each year, and that's what the report is that's included in the packet. Item J is resolution supporting housing and local decision-making authority. This is related to the current legislative session and some bills that are circulating regarding local control, our ability to do planned unit developments, and this is our support saying that we want to maintain that control, that local decision-making authority for that. So this resolution is in support of that. This is organized by the League of Minnesota Cities, and it's pertinent because one of the representatives that's authoring this bill is in our area. So very relevant to us, and you know, a lot of the communities surrounding us are also passing similar resolutions or evaluating them. Item K, Stormwater Utility Exemption Request for Parcel 21.017.7510. What this is, is there's a little strip of land in the packet you'll see that was swapped with the property owner to put in Pumpkin, or sorry, yeah, Pumpkin Hill Road, to kind of realign that, and there was a land swap, and during that land swap, the land that the property owner received was inside the city limits. Doing research, it appeared that there were some obligations that weren't initially met by the city that were promised to the property owner to not have any additional fees, because really there was a no-cost clause with this. So what we've done is worked with the property owner to come up with a resolution. This is the resolution. The one piece of it is that if this land ever transfers sale, then that will then be not part of it. So if she, if they sell the property, then this will then be in the city limits, and then it'll be subject to that stormwater utility. So we'll put that note in the utility account for that property. Item L has been removed and added to the regular agenda. Personnel actions, we have the finance analyst position. We went through a very robust interview process with, I believe we had 24 candidates for that position, so narrowed it down through a couple interviews and selected Brittany Wright for the position. She was, well, if it's approved tonight, formerly from Bell Plains, so fairly close, and I think she'll be a great addition to the team. Item N is COVID Leave Program Update. So part of the COVID Leave Program that was approved in October of 2021, some of the feedback was to provide an update, a summary of who's, how many people have used it, things like that, just so that we can kind of keep our finger on the pulse of COVID leave in the city of La Sure for that 80 hours. So that's an update. There is no request for that. It's just information only. And then finally, item O, Bulldog Youth Hockey Association Might Jamboree In-Kind Donation Request. This is something that we, I think they took a pause with it with COVID happening, and it's coming back this year, and the request is that we provide some in-kind services, some ice time, and some personnel to help with the event. And if you remember, I think the last time they held this was in 2018 or 2019, I believe. And there's quite a few people that show up and are in town, so it's a good thing for the community. You know, it's a one-day event, and there's a lot of, a lot of people come to town, and a lot of kids get to play hockey. So those are the items on your consent agenda tonight. I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Anybody? Any questions for our city administrator before I ask for a motion? If not, I'll entertain any motions to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Krogman. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? Otherwise, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up on the sheet in advance of the meeting and provide their name and address. At this time, do we have anybody who would like to address the council? We do. We have Laura. Tell me your last name again, Laura. Heinisch. You want to step on up? Thank you.
So I've spoken with
You spoke with me the other day.
With you, and I've spoken with Aaron at the police station. So I've thought a lot about this, and I do understand about the, you know, the city ordinance about the shoveling snow. And just want to bring it up that I'm not, I'm thinking $50 is kind of excessive, and I would wonder if you would reduce the fee a little bit. I mean, I don't know that the front of our sidewalk, I don't know what equipment came to our house, but I can't imagine it's $50. So that's what I want to say. Not happy. And I have one other question. The dates on the letter that I received, I'm a little confused because there's a date of January 4th, and then there's a date of February 1st. So is it January 4th that this was done?
I don't know. We'll have to ask the administrator about that.
He sent the letter.
Before we do, Laura, we had a discussion on the phone, did we not?
Yeah, we did.
And we talked quite extensively about, well, you called it a fine. I call it a statement because you received something in exchange for that $50, did you not?
Well, somebody came by and plowed the driveway or the sidewalk.
That is a service. That is a service, yes. And it wasn't done right after the snow either. It was probably a day or two or three after it'd fallen, did it not?
Well, I don't know. I didn't see anybody, and I'm very surprised that I got this in the mail. I do understand others, but I'm just here for me.
Right.
So I just think it's a lot of money.
We appreciate you addressing the council, and as I visited with you on the phone, and just so everybody else knows, it's important that our community keeps our walks clean, because as you know, there's a lot of recreational walk, you know, use of those sidewalks. Kids use them for school. Postal Service use them. Emergency people use those sidewalks, and it's important we keep them clean. And if we don't keep them clean, somebody could be hurt. And when people report these sidewalks not being clean, then the city has an obligation to make sure they're safe. But then you have an obligation to reimburse the city for what we do. Is that kind of what you were told?
That's what I was told, but I'm saying that I think $50 is quite a bit of money. That's, I'm the only one here speaking up, so I'm asking for some kind of reconsideration. You know, and I don't know what the equipment is that came by, if it was a person with a shovel. I don't know if it was a Bobcat or...
No, it was mechanical equipment, yes. Yeah, it was professionally done. And then there's, you know, there's, of course, I'm involved with the city to dispatch these people there and do the paperwork and everything, too. So I challenge you to find too many kids that'll come and shovel that for $50 even, too.
Well, I've had a professional snowplow, I'm not going to say who it is, in town here, and they've charged me for my driveway, my front sidewalk, the sidewalk from the front sidewalk to my front steps, and my porch, $60 max.
But the city's not in business to clean off sidewalks. I mean...
So that gives you the right to charge $50?
Well, there's administrative things that go on there, too. I'm gonna allow our city administrator to explain how the process works exactly, if you would.
Yeah, so what we do is it's a direct cost from the contractor to the homeowner. So in this case, I believe your direct cost was $30 to have the individual contractor come out and remove the snow. And then there's a governmental fee schedule, cost of a $20 admin fee for that. So the 30 plus the 20 is 50, and that's where the 50 comes from. So the contractor charged the city $30, and then there's a $20 administrative fee to process all of these.
So that's the going rate to go buy somebody's house from my property line, like the tree line, to the fire hydrant is $30?
Correct.
I still think it's excessive because I pay a guy $60 to do all of that and more. I mean, I just didn't hire him that day because there was just a light amount of snow.
If I may.
Yes, but I, you know, Mrs., is it Miss or Mrs.? Ms. Heinisch.
You can say whatever you want.
With all due respect, if you can get it done cheaper, why would you not do that?
I did discuss it with the guy, and he said it's a dusting. That's why I didn't...
Then it ought to be pretty easy to clean off. If it's a dusting, it just takes a broom.
That comes, my second problem is we were sick at the time, and I mean, I'm not a young spring chicken, nor is my husband.
And the city understands, you know, circumstances. If somebody, if there's a light snow and there's a dusting, and there's a sick person in the house, if you were to call the city, I'm sure the city would work with you. Would they not?
Definitely, definitely. And I'm not sure, I think you mentioned that you spoke with Captain Tiki, Aaron Tiki.
Aaron, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if you had time to look at the, there's before and after photos of each property, and the properties that were cleared, it definitely, it wasn't because of the dusting. It was because of snow that accumulated for weeks. And, you know, a lot of the snow that was cleared off was, you know, three to four inches deep. So if you haven't gotten those pictures, you can reach out to our police department and look at those pictures.
I've received them.
Okay. Okay.
But that's why I'm confused about the dates. On January 4th, the letter says January 4th. So what I'm saying is January 4th, that day. Is that the day that they came out?
Correct, yes. So that's when we received the invoice from the contractor, was the 4th. So a lot of the snow that was out there, there's a couple events that we had the contractor go out, I think, the 4th, and then we had one on the 16th, and then again on the 18th. So there were a few different dates that the contractor went out and abated these.
Okay. Well, that's what I wanted to say.
Well, we appreciate your time and your concern, and I don't ever hesitate to call me in the future, Ms. Heinisch. I mean that sincerely.
Okay.
I will discuss anything with you that you have, you know, that you don't think is fair. And I've talked to our city administrator about this. I've talked to our police department about it, and it's important we keep these walks clear for the reasons I discussed earlier.
Right.
And as you know, or maybe don't know, if somebody slips and gets hurt on your property, that could create some bigger problems for you financially. So this only is, this not only to your benefit, but it's to the community's benefit and everybody's benefit that we keep these walks cleared off. So thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sullivan. Laura, can you give me your address, please?
Sure. It's 503 North Second Street.
Thank you.
And just, I'm sure you read the public comments on the residence page. I am not the person bashing the police or the city hall. I'm not that person. I just want you to know that. Because there's a lot of people. I'll talk and no action.
Thank you. We appreciate you stopping. We do sincerely.
All right, thanks.
Is that it? Anybody else? Okay, moving on to regular agenda. This time, we're going to cover item 6A, personal action, or personnel action with the La Sure Chief of Police position. Mr.?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. For a lot of you, this is something that we've been discussing and, you know, not looking forward to as far as seeing our police chief Bruce Kelly resigning and retiring officially. But we knew it was coming. We had a plan, and this is kind of the culmination of that plan. So Police Chief Bruce Kelly will be retiring after over 32 years of service with the city of La Sure. Mr. Kelly served as the police chief for over 22 of those years. His last day will be February 28th, 2022, at 2:00 PM. He'll be signing off. So it's bittersweet, right? Bruce has put in a lot of time for public service for this community, but he deserves his retirement, and, you know, we wish him well. So part of the succession plan with this is we've started, we'll call it grooming, police captain Aaron Tiki, and he is recommended to succeed Mr. Kelly as the La Sure Chief of Police. If approved, Mr. Tiki will start as the chief of police effective March 1st, 2022. So the day after Mr. Kelly retires, personnel and budget reviewed this, this plan and process, and supports this internal promotion. And the recommendation for this exercise is for the city council to basically accept Mr. Kelly's letter of resignation effective February 28th, and then internally promote Aaron Tiki to the police chief position effective March 1st, 2022, with the terms described in the offer letter that was attached to the council packet. So with that, I'll entertain any questions. We do have Mr. Kelly here as well tonight as well. Thank you.
If not, before I accept any motions for Chief Kelly's resignation, I just want to thank on behalf of the city council, Officer Kelly, Chief Kelly, for your many years, your 22 years as our chief, and over 32 years as part of our police force, we appreciate everything you've offered to the city, this community, everything you've done, and it's with a heart full of thanks that we all will accept your resignation tonight with the motion being set forth by one of our council members. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I propose that we separate the two parts of this recommendation. First, to address the matter of Chief Kelly's resignation/retirement, and then we'll pick up the matter of Mr. Tiki.
Very good.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Bruce Kelly has served the city of La Sure as chief of police for over 22 years, and has worked for the city of La Sure for over 32 years. Effective 1 March, March 1st, Mr. Kelly will be retiring from the city. We accept Chief Kelly's resignation, are deeply grateful to him for his years of service, public service, and wish him the very best in retirement. I would so move.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
Mr. Sullivan has seconded it. Thank you.
I would like to just add to that, having worked very closely with Chief Kelly at the school district. It is going to be a huge loss for our city, but very happy for you and appreciate all your dedicated service to the city of La Sure. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swanberg. Anybody else?
I would say thank you, and Chief Kelly, you've been a great chief. Thank you.
Also, thanks, Chief Kelly.
With that said, we had a motion by Councilmember Krogman, seconded by Councilmember Sullivan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Chief Kelly.
Who's shaking?
Yeah. Come on, step on up here if you would. Chief Kelly, we'd all like to shake your hand and thank you. The second motion will be to accept the internal promotion of Officer Aaron Tiki to be the police chief of the city of La Sure effective March 1, 2022, with the terms described in the offer letter.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Do you want to second that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Krogman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item 6B, the recreational facilities master plan request for proposals. You want to take us down that road, Mr. Krogman?
I will. Mayor Kirby, members of city council, before you is an item that you saw on your capital improvement plan list for 2022, had some pretty good discussions leading up to the adoption of the budget. And ultimately, we adopted a budget allocating $40,000 for this exercise to develop a recreation facilities master plan. And this, what you have in your packet is the request for proposals for this recreation facilities master plan. And you can see it's about a 10-page document using the framework that we use for the RFP when we selected the comprehensive plan, 2040 comprehensive plan group. So very similar format as far as how we select the committee or select the group that will do this. We do have a timeline as identified on here to get us to the point where if there is a plan that we would like to adopt that includes, or that will be included in the 2023 budget, we'll have the final report submitted to city council by mid-August for incorporation, if there is anything. So the timing of this, I believe, is set up well to help us, you know, drive this home. And there's a lot of very passionate people about the recreation facilities we have in the community. And, you know, really, this is what will really define what this community has for probably the next 20 to 50 years. So the focus areas for this plan, so a recreation amenity asset inventory, and I want to make sure that it's clear, and there will likely be, and just, I haven't run this by everybody yet, but I'm trying to coordinate a joint meeting between the school district and the city council, La Sure City Council, to talk about their referendum. And this is one piece of, you know, partnering with the school district, because the recreation amenities asset inventory, that includes the school district, you know, everything that they have as well in the community that's available to use, you know, and that's basketball courts, tennis courts, you know, playground equipment, outdoor basketball courts, all of that stuff. So kind of coming up with what does this community have for an inventory? You know, with a basic, you know, what kind of shape is it in? Is it something that gets used a lot? And then that's part of the community survey and engagement. So looking at what the community wants. Really, that community survey and engagement piece is something that will really drive what does the community want? You know, we've never really had that exercise, you know, to look at this holistically and come up with a plan for the entire community. So if you remember back to the Parks Open Space and Trail System Master Plan, there were some physical engagements where, I think, the giant days, there was a group and a group that was gathering information from WSB. And then at an event for, at the dog park, they were also gathering some information about parking wreck, or sorry, parks, trails, and open spaces. And then also, there was an online mapping exercise where you could go online and put pins on a map and talk about what you want in different areas, what you like, what you don't like, and then people can go on there and like or dislike, you know, what those comments are. So kind of have that community survey and engagement piece, and then look at the current financial analysis of the recreation features in the community. So how much is the city paying for what they have? How much is the school paying for what they have? And really just coming up with, you know, a good, robust kind of acknowledgement of how much each group invests in the community for recreation features. And then looking at the community survey and then prioritizing those projects. So what are the top projects that the community is driving home from these surveys and community engagement? From there, developing an implementation plan. So what that looks like is here's what we're currently spending on recreation amenities. Here's what the community has determined that they want to prioritize. How do we get there from where we're at right now? Does that look like a dedicated, you know, 1% levy increase for five years to get there? You know, something like that, an implementation plan that gets us to the finish line of actually doing some some real projects to either enhance what we have, do something different, or really drive whatever the community comes up with as far as the engagement goes. And then once that implementation plan is developed, having an economic impact analysis of what do these features bring? I think a lot of, there's a lot of conversation about the school district with the fieldhouse and having, you know, that having some sort of economic impact to the region, you know, having sporting events, tournaments, things like that, come to La Sure. And what will that drive home for, you know, our local businesses and things like that? Having that economic impact analysis will provide a metric for the community to... Having that economic impact analysis will will provide a metric for the community to understand. You know, hey, this is an investment in in our community. It'll make the community better, and here's the economic impact that our local area will see, you know, because of of these things. And then, uh, establishing some some really, uh, solid partnerships, you know, those could be, um, you know, with the school district, with St. Anne's, with, you know, some of our corporate, uh, individuals we have in town, and really getting them to commit to something, uh, related to these features. So, um, those are the basic core areas for the plan, um, to develop, uh, and then the 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 schedule as it is, uh, tonight, uh, if we, if with this is approved and we're authorized to go out and and start, uh, soliciting, uh, proposals, uh, we would start that tomorrow. Uh, we would require those proposals are are received by March fifteenth. Proposal reviews would be between March twenty-first and March twenty-fifth, and that would be a group of, um, the the recreation and park advisory committee, the, and then this is all together, so a large group looking, being presented by these individual consulting firms, um, RPAC, uh, the community center task force, city administration, and then representatives from city council will will also be there. And really, it'll be, you know, a a cumulative effort to try to figure out who had the best proposal. Um, there's metrics in the proposal that you use to determine, you know, who's doing the best, and and that'll drive home as far as the scoring goes, um, for those. And then, um, from there, we'll do the, yeah, the interviews, and then we'll select the finalists by April eleventh, and then a notice proceed will happen on April eleventh. And then we'll have a draft report submitted by July first of two thousand and twenty-two for city council to review, along with those other boards and commissions. And then a final report will be, uh, due on August fifteenth to assist with with planning if needed. So that's the the tentative schedule tonight as it stands. Um, again, yeah, those those evaluation groups are the the community center task force group, the recreation and park advisory committee, uh, Lassure city administrator, myself, and then city council as well. And, um, I think as everybody's aware, that that Lassure Community Center Task Force is a fairly open group. So if anybody really wants to get involved with this, they can, they can join that task force and 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 really participate. So, um, the recommendation tonight is to, uh, authorize, a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the request for proposals for the recreation facilities master plan with the timeline and selection committees as described. So with that, I'll entertain any questions. I know there's a lot of information, uh, in the packet. Um, so I I'll I'll stand for questions.
Anybody have any questions? I know that this, uh, study is going to serve as a, um, a very vital key as we move forward with our community center. As you all know, the community center is a tremendous asset for this community, and, um, I I think this will, this will make a a a great roadmap on how we move forward with it. So any questions at all before we go through with the motion? If not, I'll entertain any motions. Authorize staff proceed with the request for proposal for the recreational facility master plan with the timeline and the selection of committees as described.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Huntington. Thank you. Uh, any discussion concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, lastly, um, oh, this isn't the last item. It's utility account late fee policy. This was on our consent agenda. It's been moved to our regular agenda, item six C now.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of council. Um, I had a good conversation with Councilmember Schleter about this as he as he moved this for discussion. Um, what we're proposing, so, uh, we have some goals associated with this, and, um, just a little hu- history and context. Um, the previous policy that that city council had, and this was pre-pandemic, was to have a five percent, uh, late fee, one time, not cumulative, so it doesn't compound. Uh, and really what we're proposing now is that that late fee compounds because we what we found is a lot of people, uh, are repeat, um, have the repeat delinquent accounts, and really, uh, the the decision, I think, has been made, um, for for a lot of those individuals to just, no, well, I'll just pay the five percent fee on my my bill, and then the six percent, um, fee that gets tacked on when we assess. And that's, that's why I think we've seen a lot of delinquent utility bills, uh, being certified, um, from year to year. So what we want to do is reduce the number of delinquent accounts resulting in the property tax assessment, and then we want to increase the utility fund cash flow. So as you can imagine, um, each year, we're we're seeing upwards of three hundred thousand dollars in delinquent accounts. That does have an impact on our utility funds, and really what we want is to incentivize, um, individuals to be able to, you know, to pay those, you know, and not not, and then we 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 can then in turn, you know, kind of stabilize rates for everybody else. Um, this policy itself would be effective February two thousand and twenty-two, so for billing in 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 March of two thousand and twenty-two. Um, and then it would be a a five percent total balance late fee, so cumulative. Um, and this did discuss that personnel and budget, uh, moving forward. Um, to not do, to do this in lieu of utility shut-offs at the time. So that's another option that we have as a city is to do utility shut-offs, which we, I believe, previous to two thousand and fourteen, that's what we did. Um, and then we moved to have a a policy and an ordinance that allows us to do the certification. Couple additional notes, uh, they do, delinquent accounts take up a significant amount of staff time and resources. Um, again, the the late fee was five percent of the current balance that was in place up until May of two thousand and twenty-two, and it was discontinued because of COVID nineteen. Uh, we we just weren't charging, we haven't been charging late fees. Uh, and there's a plan to augment the utility bill assistance program. So this is kind of the piece where, um, I don't know if Councilmember Schleter wants to discuss a little bit, uh, but in general, uh, it was, uh, kind of, hey, you know, we have a delinquent account. We want people to understand that, hey, you know, you you can conserve, you can reduce your bill if you think about it and you're actively, uh, you know, shutting off lights, trying to conserve water, things of that nature, um, you know, and uh, speaking with our finance staff, uh, our finance director, Joe Roby and myself, uh, you know, having a a grace period where if somebody's delinquent for one month and this, in the city, you know, pro, you know, reaches out to that individual, that would be very challenging with the number of people each month that are potentially delinquent, because once in a while, you might miss a bill. That might not mean that you're notoriously going to be delinquent. You might just make up for that the next month or something like that. So, um, one of the things I want to make sure is evident to this group is that we have a a web page or devoted to water conservation, electricity conservation, things like that. Uh, we do have a a numerous, uh, utility bill assistance programs. Minnesota Valley Action Council is the, uh, one that is used the most. Um, I think we generally get around three to five thousand dollars a year in a, or a month in assistance from Minnesota Valley Action Council. So, um, that's a tool that, uh, if you're having, uh, a difficulty paying bills, that that's that's something that you can look into. Um, but really looking at, you know, doing a little bit more in social media campaigns, encouraging, um, the application for assistance to those programs, mailers potentially, and then, um, you know, sharing of opportunities for tips and tricks for, uh, efficiency usage. So, you know, what to look for, kind of what we have on our website a little bit more, but maybe, um, included quarterly, something like that in a postcard or a utility bill flyer or something like that. Um, so in fi- in the finance department maintains a strong policy and practice of working proactively with with customers struggling to pay their utility bills. So, um, you know, what that translates to is if somebody's struggling, please just call us and we will work with you to 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 try to to try to find resolution. So, um, and and our finance department, um, you know, Sally and Joe, they do a great job of of working with customers that are that are communicating with us and, uh, you know, at the end of the day, we know things come up and we want to, we want to work with those individuals and everybody benefits if, you know, we can find out a resolution that that doesn't result in us certifying, um, you know, delinquent bills to to the tax roll. So the action requested with this item is to consider approving the the late fee policy, uh, effective February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two utility bill cycle. So it's due at the end of of March twenty twenty-two. Um, I I wanted to make sure that the group understood, you know, how we're trying to be proactive, providing information about efficiencies and things of that nature. Um, some of the utility programs that we have out there, uh, you know, really, if 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 you are, I mean, this is, you know, a call to action. If if you are struggling with utility bills, give us a call. There are resources out there that we can, we can point you in the direction of, uh, and and hopefully we can, we can, we can assist in that manner. So, um, I'll entertain any questions. I'm not sure if if, uh, Councilmember Schleter, if you you want to add anything to.
Uh, thank you, Administrator Krugel. You handled that much more eloquently than I could have. You covered everything that we talked about today. I just didn't want this to go through on the consent agenda. I wanted the public aware of what's happening. It is going to cause some hardships to some people, especially the compounding of this. And I just want to stress to everyone, if you are having problems, reach out. I know there's a lot of people's bills are affected by their usage. It could be leakage, could be just the way you use electricity and water. It could be other problems. So so reach out, see if the city can help you figure out how to reduce your bills. And that's all I have.
And i- if I may, Mayor Kirby, um, one thing we do have that I know council, well, it's a policy that we have if, let's say you have a water leak, you know, in your house, you can come to the city and say, hey, I got this water leak, you know, my bill was, you know, five times as much as what it normally is. Uh, we go back, it's a one-time deal. You can do it every three years. So it's not something that that happens, um, regularly. But we can go back and what we'll do is we'll credit your account to what your average is for the previous, I believe, six months. And then you get it fixed, and then you hope it doesn't happen again, right? So so we're, I I believe we're we're very flexible, um, with some of the policies we've adopted to to help accommodate people because things happen. Um, and, you know, something like that could really throw a wrench in somebody's finances, uh, on the short term and long term. So, um, that's another thing. So if you do have a leak, uh, you know, and you've identified it and you found it out, you can come to the city and request that, um, through our finance department as well.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
I think we need to do this. It's it's essential to the, just making sure that bills are paid on time and that we have people meeting their obligations. I am concerned about letting the public know about this. The way we do that, for example, my bill, I simply get a notice that my bill is online. It's it's automatically paid. We need to make sure that that email is somehow structured to say in big letters, be aware there's a new policy with this five percent for each overdue. I don't know how else we can do that. Certainly, we can hope it makes the local newspapers. Uh, but we need to be very proactive. I'm going to throw in another line here that's really off-center, but the same thing's true with the snow removal policy. People should know that, but they don't. And we just need to find ways to communicate these things so everyone in town is aware of it. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is a gr- if I may, Mayor Kirby, that is a great point, and, um, you know, I think one of the, you know, we try to be as robust with our communication plan that with with all of these things. So that there will, you will see things on our on our typical social media, website, things of that nature. Um, one component that will go online here shortly, this spring and and summer is the, um, uh, electronic sign that you see on Main Street that we can put some of this information out there too. So hopefully that'll that'll be a a component that helps people understand what's going on a a little bit better and makes them more aware of of some of these, uh, changes and things that are happening.
If I may also, Mr. Administrator, the, I don't get the newsletter basically that comes the utility bill, because you have to go find it. It doesn't come to you. It's not pushed to us. It's not an attachment. You got to click on it to go find it. So I rarely find it, quite frankly. So that's one way to do it, but it's not the only way. It's just a, an example of one of the many tools we need to use, but be aware that I bet you, I I'll almost bet you that eighty to ninety percent of people that get utility bill never see that. We used to get it in the mail. It was a physical copy, but we don't get that now. And I'm not saying we should mail it either, but just, and social media is another one. That's hit or miss for certain people. Some people don't use it, whatever.
Yeah, tha- that's a very good point, and, um, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, you you've signed up for Smart Hub and you have, you have it through there. So you're you're one of the about fifteen percent of people have signed up for that, you know, auto payment, electronic bill delivery, things of that nature. That is a component that we're working on to be able to do, push emails with the newsletters directly, so you don't have to, um, go on in the Smart Hub and then find on Smart Hub where the newsletter is and click the link. Um, what we were trying to do is get it so it automatically sends out to all of our Smart Hub customers to their emails. So we are working on that. Um, the other eighty-five percent of the people, they still do receive the physical copy of the newsletter. So there's a significant portion that that get it, if they read it, uh, you know, that's that's up to them. So, um, but yeah, we're looking on ways to enhance this thing as well. So if that's a great idea, and um, if there's others out there, you know, for for getting information out, uh, you know, we're we're all, we're open to as many ways as we can.
Thank you. Anybody else?
One other question on this. With our new meters, are we to the point yet where we can inform people if something excessive is happening on their accounts that's unusual?
We we are and we do, and we've been doing that for for over a year. So we have, um, alerts that pop up for for our power users on Smart Hub and in in NISC. Um, and we proactively, uh, reach out to those individuals, say, hey, we, you know, we're getting this, looks at an alga- it uses algorithms to figure out your water usage, and then it tells you, hey, this is a, this seems like a leaky toilet, you know, because you have some usage up then down, and then, you know, it's a pattern that you see. Um, and it identifies it, and we reach out and say, hey, you know, we think you have a leaky toilet. Um, if you need some some dye tablets, we have those. You can use them to try to figure out the toilet. A lot of times it's a, you know, plunger or a gasket of some sort. So we we ha- we have been doing that, um, and it's been fairly well-received. Um, you know, there's been situations where people don't believe it, and, you know, we can show them the the data and they can look at it, and then, you know, they eventually will figure it out. So, and that does help them overall with their bills because that water is, you know, you also pay for sewer on all of that water. But yeah, that's that's a very good point, and and we we try to stay on it, and and we have, um, people looking at it, uh, you know, regularly to to try to identify those things.
Yeah, I got one of those phone calls once on a leaky sprinkler head, so thank you. So with that said, um, at this time, we're looking for a motion for the approval of the utility account late fee policy to be effective with the February two thousand and twenty-two utility billing cycle. This would be due at the end of March of two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, seconding that. Uh, any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Regular agenda items, six D personnel action. Um, this is for the customer support technician position. Share your thoughts with us?
Yes, uh, Mayor Kirby, members of the council, what you have tonight is, uh, uh, seeking, we're seeking approval to hire Bonnie Davig, uh, as the customer support technician. So as I think a lot of of you are aware, um, our current, uh, customer support technician, Kari Smith, is retiring at the end of this month. Uh, and we've interviewed, I, and we actually, I believe, we had fifty-four applicants for this position. So quite a few people applied, um, and and, you know, Bonnie rose to the top of that group, and and there was an offer that was extended to to Bonnie, I believe, on Friday, and uh, came to terms with her on that over the weekend. Um, and the recommendation is to hire Bonnie, uh, Davig as the customer support technician. I believe she would then start, um, somewhere around, uh, February twenty-eighth, March first, in that area. So, um, that's what we're looking for. It's on a regular agenda because we we received that over the weekend, and we like to to have it evaluated for, uh, consideration tonight.
Anybody with any questions? If not,
so moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg, Councilmember, uh, Sullivan, uh, for seconding that. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, this time we'll kind of go around the table with our comments, anything you want to share regarding the community committees you're on. This is your chance. This is your opportunity. We'll start with, uh, Councilmember Huntington.
All right. Well, I just had an RPAC meeting, uh, week ago or maybe, or a week and a half ago. And what we discussed is actually on our consent agenda was the integrated pest management and Emerald Ash management plans that, uh, you saw on your consent agenda. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Krogman?
Yes, thank you. The planning commission will be meeting this Thursday evening. One of the agenda items will be to talk about the future of the city forum. Um, if you're interested, please, um, give pass to me or other members of that commission information. They'll be actually, uh, getting ready for that, which will be held on March twenty-sixth. Um, I'm going to ask the city administrator for the time. I believe it's ten thirty until noon, but I want to make sure I have that correct.
That is correct. It's, uh, technically ten thirty to eleven thirty, and then from eleven thirty to noon, it'll be to noon, it'll be, there'll be a couple food trucks there at the school. I I think there's a volleyball tournament going on as well, too. So we're trying to keep it short and sweet, about an hour long in total. And really, the idea is that the information will be available for people if if they want to expand their knowledge on a certain area or a strategy that's in our comprehensive plan, they'll have the ability to to know who to talk to about that. So, yeah, ten thirty to eleven thirty on March twenty-sixth.
The Saturday. And thank the council or the commission, rather, for their work on that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Schleter.
A few things, I did not make the last Leesworth County officials meeting, I had a faulty furnace that evening and was trying to keep heating my house. There was a Highway one sixty-nine corridor coalition online reception meet and greet today from eight to nine thirty, we had approximately fifteen state representatives, one state senator, one U.S. representative, and Senator Klobuchar's assistant was on also. Quite a few interesting things were discussed, three major projects that are going to be going on in the Jordan area. Activity coming up before the next council meeting, got an HRA meeting on Wednesday, we've got Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Action Day on March second. We do have a meeting scheduled with Representative Barr, and I've requested a meeting with Senator Graham, who is pushing the bill that we addressed opposition to and consented agenda item four J. He has indicated he's not available to talk to us when we're up there. So I'm looking for suggestions for another senator we might be able to talk to when we're up there on the second. Also, our PAC board may be interested tomorrow, Tuesday, at the Henderson Library, Sibley County is having a meeting on the Henderson Hub of a regional trail system that I'm going to be going, it sounds interesting. And I just want to thank Chief Kelly, looks like he's gone already. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Sullivan.
I have nothing to report tonight, I do have a fire commission meeting next Wednesday, I believe, at five thirty.
Thank you. Councilmember Swanberg?
Yeah, I would just like to thank Allison and her staff at the community center, having just recently finished up another hockey season there. We have a wonderful facility in the community center and the ice arena, the ice is top-notch. So thank you to Allison and her staff.
Thank you. Appreciate that. As far as anything I want to share tonight, again, I just want to reiterate to Bruce Kelly, my well wishes with his future, but most of all, I want to welcome Captain Tiki to his new position and his new challenge here with the city of La Sure. So I'm, I'm sure he'll do well, we're looking forward to his, his work. Other than that, I have nothing else. City Administrator Krugel, would you like to?
I just have, I have nothing that we haven't covered, just a reiteration, we have a planning commission meeting on Thursday. The following week, we have potentially a city council, independent school district board meeting on the twenty-second, more details to come with that. And then a fire commission meeting, as Councilmember Sullivan mentioned, on the twenty-third of of February, that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate everybody coming tonight, I appreciate all you folks coming to support this, this meeting also. At this time, I'll ask, take a little vote, all those in favor of dismissing the meeting? I, thank you.